There are two audience members in the attendees column.
Who, who are they?
I've got somebody named Steve Brown and Greg Crabby. Greg is with McCormick Communities.
Okay, so I will call the December 7th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And how about Mark? How about Mark? You help us with the pledge of allegiance tonight?
All right, I do this frequently with Rotary, so no real problem.
Okay, good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, um, agenda item number two is audience comments. Is there any topics that aren't on tonight's agenda that the audience would like to talk about?
If you're an audience member and you'd like to talk about something that is not one of our two public hearings tonight, please raise your hand. Using the raised, the raised hand feature on Zoom. Yeah, I am not seeing anyone raise their hand.
Okay, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the November 2nd meeting.
We do have a correction on the minutes. It, it lists me as not being present, but I was present for the November 2nd meeting.
So I think we can, we can make that correction as part of your approval tonight. Josie, can you please make sure that that gets taken care of on the back end?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended so that Commissioner Bailey was in attendance.
I will second it.
Or third it.
Third it. What the heck? Cover our bases.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
All those opposed? All right. This is going so quick so far. So the next item, agenda item four, the public hearing for the 2021 Cop Plan Plan Amendments.
Yes, I'll go ahead and give a presentation of the proposed amendments. And then if anyone, if, if the chair wants to open the hearing, we can take testimony and then you can deliberate and choose to make a recommendation. The 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, they've been in front of the Planning Commission for quite some time, and they've really been held up because the city's parks plan. We had intended to amend the Parks Plan as part of this year's docket. Unfortunately, our consultant has not gotten the final draft Parks Plan to us in time for adoption before the end of the year. And so we are recommending now that we go forward with the amendments that have been previously discussed without the Parks Plan, and then we will bring the Parks Plan forward for adoption in 2022. To remind the Planning Commission on about what is included in this year's docket. There were several city-initiated text amendments. There was one site-specific land use map amendment. And then there was the Parks Plan element, which I mentioned has been removed from the, the list of amendments we're asking you to adopt at this time. We did talk about this, I think, going all the way back to April, and I know this is on the agenda at our June meeting, so it's probably been some time since you've seen this. We did touch on it again in, in October and November as we worked through Parks Plan related issues. But I'll, I'll give you a rundown of the amendments that are included in your packet this evening. First, the city-initiated text amendments, there is a capital facilities element amendment, amended meant, which adds references to two projects. One of them is the City Hall Space Analysis performed by Rice Ferguson Miller in 2016. The other is the South Kitsap Community Event Center, which we received funding for from the Kitsap Public Facilities District. And so this is just an amendment to add these two planned projects to the capital facilities element of the comprehensive plan. The next amendment in the utilities element is to update the capital facilities lists for both the water and sewer plans to reflect our, the, the technical planning documents that our water and sewer departments have adopted. We did move forward and adopt an updated capital facility charge earlier this year. And so this just brings the numbers that are in the, the city's Growth Management Act-based comprehensive plan in line with our water system plan and our adopted rates. The next amendment is the amendment to Appendix B, which is plans adopted by reference. I mentioned already the City Hall Space Analysis being added as a reference document. It also references the updated water system plan, sewer system plan, the new Transportation Improvement Program, and then it replaces the old 1987 Blackjack Creek Comprehensive Management Plan with the new 2017 Blackjack Creek Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan. And the reason to have that in our planning documents is that on occasion, if, if the Saquamish Tribe or other agencies are applying for funding to do culvert replacement projects or other environmental enhancement projects, there's a whole lot of objectives in that, that 2017 Blackjack Creek Management Plan. And so it makes us a partner with them to have this officially adopted on our books. And it's, it's a really well put together plan that the city participated in its creation. We've just never formally adopted it by reference in our, our comp plan. Finally, the six-year Transportation Improvement Plan. Every year you guys see this document and we updated for, for new cost estimates for various projects, and then we shift things forward a year, or if projects get completed, they are then shown as something that is kind of marked off the list as being constructed. So, for instance, Tremont Street is now a completed project, and so it is no longer a planned project on the six-year Transportation Improvement Program. So we've updated some dollar amounts in the, the tip, especially related to how we're proceeding with the the Bethel Corridor projects we, we are funding in 2022. The design of Phase One of the Bethel Corridor and how that money is split between 2022 and 2023, obviously needs to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. And so we are cleaning up our comprehensive plan sort of on the back end of our budget process. Finally, there is the he rezone application or Comprehensive Plan Land Use Amendment application. Mister He owns property off of Salmon Berry, and he has already submitted a project to develop a, a commercial mixed-use piece of land that includes the China Sun Restaurant. It's off of Bethel. This project abuts that to the north and connects through to Salmon Berry, and it provides access to the proposed project that he is building through Salmon Berry. And so the objective here is to provide consistent zoning between his two pieces of property so that the, the access tract is zoned the same as the tract for which they have applied for development permits. And so the staff recommendation on that one is that it be approved. And in the packet, I think there's a map showing precisely where this is. It's a, it's a little east of Bethel on Salmon Berry on the south side of, of Salmon Berry. So with that, I don't have anything else to add. I think the next step would be to open the public hearing on the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. And then after taking testimony, the commissioners can ask questions or deliberate on whether to make a recommendation on the package as it's presented.
Okay, so I will open up the public hearing for the 2021 Cop Plan Amendments.
And once again, if any members of the public wish to testify on the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, please use the raise hand feature built into Zoom.
Do we still only have two audience members?
We do, and Mister Greg Crabby has raised his hand. I'm going to recognize him now and allow him to talk. Greg, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Okay, yes, good evening. Can you guys see me? I'm in my truck. And so it looked a little strange. That's why. So Nick, I just wanted to ask, we had discussed the possibility of including an arborist as a qualified person to do the tree studies and the canopy studies for the subarea. And I was wondering if that, if that has been added.
That's actually in the next agenda item tonight. The, the hearing on the McCormick Village Plan is the next topic of discussion. That's not part of the 2021 package of amendments.
Oh, okay. Your agenda is set up a little bit differently, so I, I'll, I'll lower my hand.
So seeing no other comments or audience members that would wish to speak, I will close the public hearing for the 2021 Cop Plan Amendments.
All right. And so if, if any, if you guys wish to have discussion or have asked questions of me, I, I would suggest first making a motion, and then once the motion is made, you can deliberate and ask questions.
What's the motion for?
The motion would be to make, to recommend approval of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendments as presented.
Can we ask questions before we make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I, I believe so. I'm not the Roberts Rules of Order expert, but I, I think usually you're supposed to have a motion on the table before you start discussion.
Okay, call for the question. Understood.
Calling for the question is actually, I guess.
That's, that's later.
That's before you vote. I think just making the motion to make the recommendation, you then have discussion once it's been seconded.
Hey, then I'll go ahead and make the motion that I move to recommend that the City Council approve an ordinance adopting the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendments as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, someone call for the question.
No, don't call for the question yet. Now you can have discussion.
Oh, we did that kind of in reverse. I think we were supposed to discuss prior.
Yeah, we used to, yeah, this, yeah. We used to discuss it first.
We, we, I think we have, we have bad habits with Roberts Rules of Order. I think you're supposed to have a motion on the table before you start discussing.
I like our bad habits.
Yeah, we're, we're like rules of order here.
I do have a question, Nick. The, it's been, 2016 has been five years since that Rice Ferguson study was done. Can you you refresh my memory or our memory on like how this expansion of City Hall and all of their support buildings is going to look like?
Well, so when, when City Hall was originally designed, it included a wing that extended the public works and the court building out towards Kitsap Street. And so the, the building would have extended over the, the police storage area and and so that was value engineered out of the original design, but was sort of left on a shelf as a possible addition. But what this study actually did was really look at our, our FTE counts, our growth rates, and really project forward how much space we need. And so while it, it does recognize the original plans to expand the building, it also is more looking at, we need to add, you know, I, I don't know a specific number, but 8,000 square feet of, of office space over the next 20 years. And so it's the math behind determining how much square footage is needed to support the city's ongoing operations. And so one of the projects the City Council is putting forward in the budget is we're, we're doing some maintenance work on City Hall. And long-term, I believe there is a desire to, to create additional space for City Hall, but what that looks like exactly, we don't know because it hasn't, it would need to be redesigned.
Got it. Thank you.
There you go. Sorry, silly mute button. I noted in the docket, it discussed like a end date of 2025 for the expansion of City Hall, but it sounds like that's probably not accurate if they haven't really even began discussing how they want to expand it.
I believe we have somebody under contract to do the work now. I just don't think it's been designed yet. So I think it's, it's, it's getting started and the intent is to, to do something in the next few years.
Okay, thanks.
Is everybody back in their office now? I know this doesn't have to do with the comp plan, but just.
I, I think people are in part-time, but we are not in every day yet. Long-term, I mean, the, in talking to the mayor in our staff meetings, I believe that the intent is to return to the, to the office in some capacity, but maybe not full-time forever. But we've grown so much as a staff in the last, you know, five or six years, and with the amount of growth that we're seeing in our community. Even with teleworking, we are still going to need the space that was identified in the study, but we, we are doing things in office like moving to you know, more generic workspaces where there, there are cubes available for people who work from home sometimes, and they can just come in and sit down at a desk and plug in their laptop rather than having an assigned desk. And so it makes it so that, that people can float a little bit and take an, take an open office on the days that they're in. So there's a little bit of sharing going on.
Nick, what is under permit or construction right now for residential units in Port Orchard?
That is a hard number to define because some, you know, permits include subdivisions and some subdivisions have, you know, we have McCormick West on the books, which is 1,550 single-family residences. That was approved in 2008 and it's, it's still a valid permit. I've estimated that we have around 5,000 units of housing in the pipeline in one form or another, and some of those are, are you know, being built tomorrow, and some of those are, are still 15 years away, but they are in the permitting pipeline. So there, there's a significant amount of housing in our, our near future.
Thanks, Nick.
Any other questions?
I've got one. Hey, Nick, going back to the, the city overhaul, city, city hall overhaul. Does that include bringing community development back or to the main building, or is that going to remain a separate entity?
I, I suspect it's going to remain a separate entity for the foreseeable future. I think the, the cost of adding square footage on City Hall is, is far more than what we paid for that small building. I, I believe at some point, when we do the community center, I mean, there is the ability to host council meetings and planning commission meetings in the new community center when it gets built. And then that would allow the existing council chambers to be rehabbed into other space, but I don't think that that decision has been made yet. It's only something that we've explored or that, as we've designed the community center, we said, we'd like to have the ability to do this if it becomes necessary because it's cheaper to rehab the existing city council space and then move meetings across the street.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? So do you want to vote now? You guys ready?
Now you call for the question.
Question. All those in favor?
I.
I.
All those opposed? Nicely done. Thank you, guys. All right, let's move on to item three under the business items, public hearing from McCormick Village SubArea Plan and Regulations. This is continued from November.
So I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail about what's in the plan. I think we covered that pretty thoroughly in November. The, we left this public hearing open, and so tonight you would be reopening the hearing to make sure that there's no further testimony. We, I, I think the plan's largely been well-received. We did present it to the City Council at the work-study meeting in November, and they were very excited about the plan and had no, you know, no concerns or questions. And, and so at this point, it's a matter of getting a planning commission recommendation so that it can be voted on by the City Council next week, which is our intended schedule. And Mister Crabby, who is in the audience tonight, and I believe wishes to testify on this matter. They are, they are really chomping at the bit to get going on this mixed-use village. I believe we have a pre-application meeting scheduled with them after the first of the year, so our intent is to try to get this adopted so that they can hit the ground rolling, are, are running in 2022. So again, this is a, a subarea plan and overlay district that implements the subarea plan for the McCormick Village Center, and that center has been on the, the books at Kitsap County going back to around the year 2000, and then has been identified in the city's comp plan since shortly after we annexed. And so I don't think it's a big surprise to anybody, but now we're putting kind of imagery and standards in place that will allow this to come together and be successful. So with that, I would recommend reopening the public hearing. And it looks like we're down to one audience member, and that's Mister Crabby, so I will unmute him once the hearing is open.
So at this time, I'll open the public hearing from, or reopen the public hearing from McCormick's Village SubArea Plan and Regulations.
All right, so Mister Crabby, I believe you wanted to testify on this. Did you want to unmute yourself? You're still able to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear? Okay.
Yes, we can.
All right. Uh, well, just again, thank you, my, the question I raised earlier, we just want to make sure that our arborist is allowed to participate in.
Looks like we're losing you, Greg. And for the, Greg has spoken to me about this issue offline, so I'll try to summarize it for him. The Greg had requested under the tree canopy standards of the plan that in addition to allowing a landscape designer to do the, the work specified in the overlay district that an arborist also be allowed to do that work because they typically have an arborist work with a surveyor to prepare tree canopy plans. And so that was a friendly suggestion I thought that we could live with. It just wasn't in the draft version that went to your, went to you in the packet. So Greg, I don't know if you heard that, but did that summarize your comments? I think we've lost Mister Crabby.
It did.
Okay, great. So I think that's the end of the public comments. Annette, if you would like to close the hearing.
No, I just, I'll just sit here and leave it open. Yes, I'll close the public hearing from McCormick Village SubArea Plan and Regulations. So do you want us to make a motion again like we just did last time?
That would be the proper way to do it, I believe.
Anybody want to make a motion?
And the motion would be to recommend approval of the McCormick Village SubArea Plan and Overlay District to the City Council with an amendment to allow an arborist to prepare a tree canopy plan as specified in the overlay district.
I just so want to discuss things before we make a motion. I know that's backwards, but it's so hard to make a motion thinking that we might change things after we discuss it.
Well, yeah, I, I've been at this for a lot of years, and we typically discuss before a motion.
Right.
I'm sorry that I brought up the correct Robert, Robert rules this evening.
A lot, Nick.
So why did that come about? Did someone comment that we were doing it incorrectly?
I was just trying to help steer the meeting and
it just means that any motions just need to be rephrased if there's changes after a discussion. So I'll move to accept the motion.
Anybody want to second it?
Can we discuss it a little bit? If there's discussion topics?
I, I believe you do not, I, I, I don't, I don't even own a copy of Robert's Rules, but I believe that the chair can open the floor for discussion after it's been, after the motion has been presented. You're going to be, come back and tell us, Mark.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, you know, and there's a bunch of parliamentarians where you're going. But anyway, I, why don't we discuss, why don't we discuss for a little bit? Because we're probably going to have to dial in the motion further.
Yes, thank you.
I would just like to chime in for a moment, and Nick, perhaps you can address this. So I think for me, my biggest hangup with this subarea plan is, is that, you know, I think it was about two months ago, your contractor or, or consultant basically shared with us the results of the survey that went out to McCormick Woods, and it was very obvious that to members at who live out there that, that the protection of habitat, protection of trees, protection of the natural environment was incredibly important to them. And look at the subarea plan, the way it's being, been drafted. It, it doesn't seem to take any of that into consideration. Yet the survey screamed the opposite. This is what we want you to take into consideration. And so I kind of have a hangup with that.
Yeah, I, I under, I understand the hangup, and I think that, that the challenge is that this has been identified as a center in our comprehensive plan. And what we're planning is the center of the center. And creating a natural area in the center of a center are kind of diametrically opposed objectives. And the other part of this is I've discussed previously is that, you know, we're, we are within the city limits of Port Orchard, and under the Growth Management Act, this is an urban area that's meant for urban development. And so while we do set aside parks and open space, the you know, in, in accordance with the parks and recreation element of our comprehensive plan, development is still going to occur. So within, if you look at the area surrounding the, the center here, obviously, the, the headwaters of Anderson Creek are in McCormick Village Park, and you've got a, a 40-acre plus or minus park just to the east of the center. South of the center, in McCormick West, you have probably 20 or 30% of that entire site that are critical areas or critical area boppers that are being set aside, including a massive area that separates McCormick West from McCormick Woods, where you've got a massive pond and walking trails through the woods. And so a lot of those areas are being preserved where, where it makes sense to preserve them because of their, their habitat value. But when you have upland, dry urban land, under the Growth Management Act, that is supposed to be developed at, at urban densities. And in the countywide planning policies and in Vision 2050, centers specifically are supposed to be even more dense than those areas that are not designated as centers. And so we designated this as a center in our 2016 Comprehensive Plan for the city. So to the extent that, that we are trying to preserve those areas, that is sort of being done in the periphery around the center, and the center itself is having, you know, very robust landscaping. We're establishing new tree canopy. We're preserving stands of trees where it's possible within the, kind of the core area, but it's, you know, it's, it's really not. It's not viable to meet centers' criteria and preserve stands of forest in, in a, what's a pretty compact area.
If what we're discussing this evening, I have said it by speaking, was not approved by either us or the council, the subarea plan still exists. What would it look like?
Well, right now, the subarea plan in our, our comprehensive plan, it shows a boundary that says this area should be, we should develop a plan for this area as a center. So it, it, the goal that exists in our plan today was that this will be a center, and we need to do the work to create a plan to make this a center. And a center is a pretty clearly defined thing in the regional growth strategy as provided by Puget Sound Regional Council. And so a countywide center, which is kind of the lowest echelon of, of centers and a local center, is supposed to have 10 activity units per acre. An activity unit is a housing unit or a job. And we are planning this right at 10 units per acre, which is kind of the minimum density for, for centers' development, where it makes for the efficient provision of transit and creates sort of a synergy that is, that is needed to make a, a center function. We, we aimed for a similar target when we did the Ruby Creek Center. And of course, Ruby Creek was surrounded with Blackjack Creek on the east, Ruby Creek running through the middle, and so the, the creek and the critical areas and the floodplains were protected. But we still developed those upland areas or, or provided plans that resulted in urban, more of an urban-type development. And in Ruby Creek, the, the interesting thing is that because half of the land area was critical area, that meant that the upland areas had to be closer to 20 activity units per acre to make up the difference for the natural areas. And that's how you hit the, the average density across the whole, the whole area. And that's how you hit the, the average density across the whole, the whole area.
I think, I think my main concern with it and, and I like the plan overall, but is, is the people moving skills or, or pathways that we have in it. And, and primarily, I'm talking about vehicles and bicycles. Old Clifton is, is not set up for what's going on out there. I'm just hoping that the city and the county will get together and, and make some improvements in moving vehicles out of that area and into that area. So that we don't have increased traffic jams out into that area as we continue to grow the city towards the west. My only concerns.
Sure. And, and to remind you all, the, the twenty year transportation improvement plan, which is we, we amended the six year tip tonight, but the twenty year tip is kind of the master list of all the projects that are on the books for the city. We do have the non-motorized pathway that connects. It's a, it's a grade separated pathway, but it would run from Anderson Hill all the way to Tremont and really tie the, the main part of the city to McCormick Woods. And Old Clifton Road, we, that is also a project on the six year tip. And we have money in the budget for 2022. We're designing those non-motorized improvements from the sub area to the entrance of McCormick Woods and connecting the park and sort of tying all of those neighborhoods together so that people can walk between them. So both of those are projects that are already on the books in, in support of, of this area becoming a center and eventually having a, a school or, or two schools uh, on the, the west side of Fugly Road.
Is there any projected uh, plans for improving the Sunny Slope entrance from the west side?
Our, our improvements really stop at Fugly Road. We, we've identified a roundabout there, which there is a back entrance to McCormick West at Fugly and, and near the church. And so we want to make sure that people who live in McCormick West can get across Old Clifton without, without coming all the way back to the roundabout that's shown in these planning graphics. So when the high school happens, that roundabout will also happen. But anything west of the high school is, is unincorporated county and it's not urban, it's rural. So that would remain a rural road. But that's not to say that there aren't safety improvements, either shoulders or uh, intersection controls that are needed at the, I know that there's that five, uh, five-way intersection that, it's Sunny Slope and Old Clifton and I forget the, the other roads that intersect out there. But that's, that's a county project.
All right, thanks, Nick.
Nick, perhaps another issue you could speak to. I'm just curious. And during the October and November Planning Commission meetings, I believe it was Wayne and Kelly Wright spoke to the topic of people who live out in McCormick Woods, their HOA dues are what pay to maintain their parks and walking paths. And now by having the center out there and increasing, I can't remember how many people, you know, homes. It, has there been any talk as to how that's going to be addressed?
Well, the, the HOA is I, I, I think the comment had more to do with the parks plan and the fact that the parks plan had identified those walking trails as amenities in the city. Is that?
Yes.
Yeah, so again, that was a, that was related to the adoption of the parks plan, not the sub area plan.
No, I know, but the sub area plan will not that not bring more people in?
Um, well, yes, but the, and, and I don't know whether the McCormick West HOA is going to be folded into the McCormick Woods HOA or whether they're going to be separate entities on either side of uh, in, in each development. But those, those are private facilities that are available for the use of those residents. The reason for identifying them in the parks plan is to say that, well, the HOA provides these, these facilities. And so therefore, the need for trails in this area is met through private facilities. And we should be looking at other areas of the city that don't have any facility available to them first. And, and you know, whether that's right or wrong, we didn't set up the HOA or come up with a plan for these trails to, to be there in the first place. They just, they just exist. And maybe that's something that the HOA wants the city to take care of in the future. Or maybe it's something that they prefer to keep private. But they, they absolutely have the right to exclude people from using those trails if they choose to. But I suspect the residents of McCormick North are going to be um, part, part of this HOA. I could be wrong. I don't know if Greg Krabby is, is back as an attendee. Can I allow you to talk, Greg? You're muted.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
You're breaking up a little, but go ahead and give it a try.
So the HOAs will be combined. So the new homes in McCormick North will be contributing to the maintenance of the trails that were of concern at the last Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
So does that answer the question then?
Yes, it wasn't so much a question as I just thought, you know, what, if there had been any discussion on how that would be addressed. It seemed to be important to them when it got brought up last two months.
For done with that one, I do have a question about um, the tree canopy standards. It's page one forty on the, on the, uh, on the booklet.
Yes.
How does that line up to the one that we set up for Significant Tree? Code that we did a year or two ago.
It, so this is a different standard altogether than what would apply elsewhere. And um, I don't know if you were at the meeting where we discussed this, but in, in McCormick Woods Parcel A, which is right at the entrance to the McCormick Woods area there where they, they've been doing some clearing and there's some new homes going in. Right after that was cleared, we had a windstorm and a bunch of the trees that everybody wanted to save blew down. Again, on power lines and the power went out, out there for a couple of, um, I don't know whether it was hours or days. But um, again, trying to save swaths of trees, especially in the core of a center is not desirable because they are blowdown risks. And so this is an approach that we're taking to make sure that we are designing the landscape of these areas to include trees to achieve a certain canopy and to make sure that those trees are going to be robust and can handle um, windstorms. And so, yes, the trees are gonna look small for the first couple of years, but we're really looking at the long-term look and feel of the neighborhood and making sure that we have nice tree-lined streets and good tree canopy in the neighborhood. As opposed to trying to save big trees right in the middle of, of a neighborhood where that, where they are likely to be a hazard. So that's the approach we're taking here, but it's, it's, you know, again, it's a relatively small area where that overlay district applies.
Think that kind of dovetails into what I think Stephanie was trying to, to say about maintaining the more um mature natural quantum qualities of the area.
Yeah, functional habitat.
And as I recall, in our original Significant Trees, we also tried to make sure that thing, because you have, remember, bring thing, make sure that larger trees were um clustered together for protection of themselves. Because you brought that up at that time about leaving individual trees that could then easily be blown down because we've taken away their protection by cutting all their neighbors down. So it seems to me that that Significant Tree, it's like uh, policy, we just kind of set out, it's not handy here. Let's just slide it off to the side.
Yeah, it feels that way. Right. And the trees that are being proposed, I mean, you know, a six-foot flowering cherry is nothing in terms of habitat value as compared to those forests out there right now in maintaining Significant Trees.
Yeah, we've lost a tremendous amount of trees in the city.
Yeah, we have.
In the past couple of years. I mean, it's, it's uh, almost mind boggling.
So again, I, I just want to reiterate that the, the existing Significant Tree code of the city applies in every area on the map on your screen except the purple area north of Old Clifton Road. So all of the areas, um, uh, the, the school site. You know, McCormick West, those areas are, are doing tree surveys and are preserving trees. Um, it's, it's really just this purple core at the north end here that has the tree canopy standard. And, and from a design perspective, it, it makes sense.
So doing just a rough estimate, I'm gonna guess that purple area is about twenty percent of that whole area you're talking about.
Well, the, the purple area, yes, but the purple area north of Old Clifton is probably more like ten percent.
And the areas that have already been denuded, essentially, um, where we got row after row after row of homes without any significant patches um, probably take up another forty percent of that area? If you put the map up again.
Yeah, let me scroll back to it. Hang on.
And the future school site is the other one that's probably going to do quite a bit. So the purple area, the up, the northern portion.
This, this pocket here has been developed already and yes, that was mostly cleared of trees except at the perimeter. And that one was from, so McCormick North, which is the houses here and the houses over here were approved by Kitsap County in two thousand and ten under Kitsap County standards.
Right, long before we put the Significant Tree
um, right.
Code in place.
Right, I think McCormick West though has slightly different standards and again, I might call on Greg. I can't remember whether we have done tree surveys in these areas or not. I know, I thought we did one in McCormick West. I'm not sure about McCormick North.
So what I'm saying, what, in this particular area, what are we protect, ending up protecting? There's a, it's like ten percent, the, the purple area south of the road.
So the purple area south of the road has never been entitled. There's nothing planned there. And when they come in, they will have to do Significant Tree protection. So this kind of moon-shaped piece.
Right.
You've got a massive critical area here. We, we've overlaid the lots uh, in McCormick West and North. So you've got a massive critical area here. And then you've got critical areas running through the middle where all of these trees are being saved there. And there's another significant collection of trees and wetlands a, a little bit further to the west. And then north, um, you have, there's a creek corridor through here that's next to their stormwater pond. Um, further north in this area, there's not a whole lot of preservation. Except around their stormwater pond uh, to the very north end of the, the corridor. But this huge wetland complex to the, to the east of McCormick West is totally preserved and is, creates a huge buffer between McCormick Woods. You can kind of see the driving range here uh, to give you perspective. And, and all of that is also being saved. I mean, so if you look at the, between McCormick Village Park, the wetlands and these buffer areas, you've probably got well, I guess within the red boundary, that's probably closer to twenty or thirty percent of the area that is being left in the natural condition. But, without understanding how the school site will develop.
But are those areas even, I mean, those are wetlands and areas that are already protected and not going to build. So we're not really worrying about protecting those. The, the woodland habitat there. It's already been there. Or it's unusable, so it's not like somebody's going to build there anyway.
To some degree, yes. Certainly the wetlands, the buffers vary and have, you know, there's some flexibility when it comes to buffers, but uh, the, the layout that you see, see here is pretty well locked into place. And it's just a matter of, of kind of their phasing going forward. And I did see Greg Krabby had raised his hand. Um, I don't know if he's still uh, in our meeting or if he dropped out. I, I think he dropped off the meeting and I have to let him in again. Um, you mind if I let Greg speak to that?
No, go right ahead.
He's still in the meeting. I can ask him to unmute.
Greg, I, I think I let you in here.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so on McCormick North, we have obligations for some forested buffers around the perimeter. And, and those have largely been met. And we will be in the area, we will keep as many of the, of the trees as we can at the entry and along Old Clifton Road.
So I, I I think what, I, I don't know, it sounds kind of
you know, are, are doing our best to keep I believe it's currently a thirty or forty, the kind of density that the zoning a lot working towards, it, it would be difficult.
Greg, you broke up quite a bit there, but um.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, you know, I've got another, I've, I've got another engagement and I wasn't able to find an internet.
Okay, well, we're gonna put you back on mute and
Just work getting off my phone.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and mute you because you're, you're still breaking up quite a bit.
There has been a lot of trees taken down, not only in McCormick Woods, but on Sydney for the apartments, on Sydney for the um, storage units. And the, up on the hill on Glenwood, all those trees have come down and it's just, so is everybody on the same playing field?
No, different people are subject to different regulations. The storage units you mentioned, they're actually in the county. That's not a city project. Um, so they're under county regulations. On Glenwood, are you referring to the area that was recently logged or are you referring to the Stetson Heights development where it was cleared?
That, that one.
Yeah, so Stetson Heights, um, they met the standards that were in place in the city in twenty fourteen. Um, and those standards are different today and would have applied differently had they come in later. So they're, they're under twenty fourteen standards. Which other projects did you mention?
Uh, the apartments down off Hovey, Sydney and Hovey.
The, the apartments didn't have Significant Trees present when they developed. So remember, a Significant Tree is, is designated as over a certain size. And that site had been cleared and developed back in two thousand and ten, kind of as a, they tried to make it more marketable to sell it. And they cleared the site, put in the stormwater pond. And so all the trees were gone in two thousand and ten. Then we annexed it and um, those trees just hadn't grown enough to be considered significant.
I don't, are we talking about the same piece? Because there were some pretty big trees there and I don't remember it being logged before.
Uh, you're talking about the, by the Chevy, Chevy dealer?
Up on top on, on Sydney though, right on the main road, not down Hovey. Cause I know there, I know that that was cleared, but up on, up on Sydney itself.
Right.
Right across from that barn. There's like an old barn or something right there.
Let me go to Google Maps here and see what uh.
And it doesn't really matter. I mean, I feel like I, I, I just kind of got off track a little bit. I was just wondering.
Think you're, you're talking about here at the intersection of Hovey and Sydney, this big site that's cleared?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you go back to Street View on Google from before the site was cleared, that's the wrong side of the road. Let me see if I can go back in the time machine here and take you back a year. Um, these trees are all below the Significant Tree, Tree Threshold. None of those are, are eighteen inches diameter breast height. So all of this stuff is, you know, it looks like a lot of alder and um other trees. And, and once you're back in the site, it was actually pretty open.
So I think the point of this isn't to get into the weeds of specific lot by lot. I think there was a significant frustration with the loss of trees and natural environment, which actually precipitated the amount of attention we put towards the Significant Tree code that we put into place. And I think the fruit, fruit of the frustration is what we're seeing now, because many of these were in place prior to that code. And um, I just think that what you're, what we're getting to with McCormick here is that we think of the older McCormick, it's heavily wooded. They built into a heavily wooded area, saved a lot of trees, made the area look like houses that were placed into a natural environment that is still maintained. This looks like more, the more recent McCormick houses that where they do the typical strip the land and This looks like more the more recent McCormick houses that where they do the typical strip the land and build and then grow a bunch of little bushes. I think that's where some of the frustration may be coming from.
You're here, Dave. Well put.
Yes, nicely done.
I I think the um, you know, I I understand the feeling when, because it's such a a major juxtaposition between the existing conditions and the i- immediately it is so drastically different. But when you look at the the landscape plans that are being created, you have to, you have to give that landscaping time to establish itself, and in ten years, it's going to look vastly different than it does today. And and those trees are not going to present hazards to people or to homes. If you look at the old part of McCormick Woods, the one that is sort of romanticized um, and that everybody likes, you're talking about quarter and half acre lots, which are not proposed at all in any of the subdivisions going forward. So all of the entitlements around the center are already permitted at densities that are far higher than what the old part of McCormick Woods was permitted at. And it is not possible to do that sort of tree retention and to build homes sort of in the woods in the same way that was done in the the early nineties at McCormick Woods. I I just
And that's where the frustration lies.
Exactly.
Here because we like the natural environment, we like the ruralish feel to the area, we all did. And in ten years, I'm going to be retired and gone, who knows, maybe farther than just gone. So I'm not going to get to appreciate the ten or twenty year mark on those on those growing trees. What I will know is that our current community is changing dramatically because we're taking down the natural resources that drew me to this area to begin with.
Right, and and you know, other than this purple area north of Old Clifton, all of the tree removal that's going to occur is already set in stone. And so the alternative to adopting a plan that allows for those trees to be replaced using a can a tree canopy mechanism, which aims for that, you know, uh, I think it's thirty percent coverage at twenty years. The alternative is to to not develop the land, because there there isn't a way to develop that. As McCormick has has been developed previously, and under the Growth Management Act, we and under Growth Management Hearings Board case law, that type of density that you see in the old parts of McCormick Woods isn't even allowed in urban areas anymore. We're we're required to to plan for a higher uh, degree of of density than that.
That's a frustrating point as well, the Growth Management Act. It it seems to me that a community should be able to determine how they want their community to look. And if a community wants quarter acre lots with large trees like old McCormick Woods, then the community should be able to have that.
Think I would like to interject um with with the other side of the argument. Um, because Nick said that he thinks there's fifty one hundred homes planned for our community. And um, you know, Seattle metro area, greater Seattle metro area was like the second or third fastest growing metro area in the nation. And one of the challenges, and and I'm I'm really empathetic, I want this development to be done right with our community in mind and and beauty imbued into it. You know, one of the implications of not developing this land is uh unaffordable homes. And and you know, if if the density isn't added, then it's just harder for people to live here, and these are the people who drive our streets as police and who work at Safeway and bag our groceries and who come in on the Navy ships. And I'm really sensitive to that as well. And and it's it's just not the even ten thousand or lot sizes have to be smaller than they used to be. There's just can't do it anymore.
And I would, I think that's a great point, Joe. Um, I would add that I I think from an environmentally sus- like a sustainability perspective, having this sort of density and having things that people can walk to has huge impacts in terms of carbon footprint. It makes providing transit to this area viable. So it it moves the needles environmentally in a lot of other ways that are are really positive. In addition to, like you said, providing um, for for housing affordability, I mean, the the market is getting tighter and tighter and tonight simultaneously, the city council is holding a meeting with county commissioners about homelessness at Veterans Park. We just simply don't have the housing in our community. I think the population of of homeless persons at Veterans Park is now a hundred and thirty people living out there in the woods. So it's um, you know, it's, these are our growing pains sort of issues and the the tree canopy approach here, you know, we have the significant tree ordinance in place in the rest of the city. Um, we have not tried the tree canopy approach, and I think I I really do believe it is a better long term approach to how we ensure that we have a a forested city in the future that is is viable. I mean, you know, Bainbridge Island has a whole lot of attorneys on staff and the ability to fight development, because it is a very affluent community. We we don't have you know, our community just doesn't you know, we we haven't taken the approach that Bainbridge Island has where um, first of all, it's an island that sort of has rural areas within its city and also has constraints on water resources and other other constraints that sort of prevent all of the island from becoming urban in the same way that that areas that are closer to Bremerton uh, have become. But that's that's really not a luxury that we have here. We have the sewer capacity, we've planned the water capacity. Um, the zoning is already in place. Most of this is already entitled. This is the final few hundred lots and twenty thousand square feet of commercial to sort of make this a neighborhood.
Well, I'm a realist enough to know that we are not probably going to stop what's already in motion. And perhaps the price we pay for losing our community feel, our current feel hopefully is to salvage the lower density portions of our county. But the um, I I because we don't have wealthy attorneys here to fight every tooth and nail to save the the environment. It's kind of where the buck stops here with our commission right here. I'm trying to decide how we're going to do that. So bringing that up, but I but I do understand that, yes, I mean, there are a lot of attributes to doing it. But I do still feel, and I think I'm not alone from the standpoint of uh, members in the community and our citizenship, the frustration in the feel of AKA progress.
I'd like to say too that I find it highly unlikely that the people that are living at Veterans Park are going to be living out of McCormick Woods. So I don't, I I don't even want to bring that argument into it, and I I do agree that we do need affordable housing. But when you look at the apartments and stuff they're building and the and the price of those apartments, you know, so the contractors can make their their money and then head on out of here. That isn't going to help those people either. So again, I don't want to bring that into this this argument, because that's just unrealistic. If we really want to help those people, we need to build something like they're doing in Seattle. Where um, it is for the homeless. So anyway, I'm just, I'll stop with that right there.
Well, I I don't know um, where we're at on, I don't know if this actually got a second or not for discussion, but I I don't know what the planning commissioners, the planning commission's pleasure is this evening or where you'd like this to go. Um, I I really can't think of a way to move this forward. On, I mean, we could try to move forward under the existing significant tree framework, um, which I'm not even sure that that there's that many significant trees in the purple area to begin with. We would have to do the tree survey and actually go out there and figure out which ones are significant and then figure out how many replacement trees are needed. And our code, as it's currently written, still allows you to remove a significant tree. You just have to replace it at a certain ratio. So you're really going to end up in the same place where the trees that are in the way of of something happening can still be removed um, and replaced. And what we're proposing is a different way of figuring out how to replace them, which is a a percentage uh, tree canopy. So if if you look at the sub area plan regulations and I'm I'm scrolling through looking for the page number where those are found, you know, you could choose to make a motion to increase that percentage to see higher percentage of canopy as part of future development, and that would certainly move the needle on on how many trees you have here in the future, but um, the alternative is coming up with a totally different framework for preventing trees from being cut in the area, which, you know, is is not something that is going to happen quickly. It's, that would take time to develop and we just don't have, um, we don't have that that framework in place. The other thing I would add is, you know, we talk about different sites in Port Orchard that have been cleared, and if you drive the back road into McCormick Woods from Glenwood, that whole area on both sides of McCormick Woods Drive has been logged recently. And that was done under a DNR permit that under state law, we have no ability to prevent that from being issued by DNR. So if the developer determined that there were significant trees there, they could get a logging permit and go log the entire site with a DNR permit, they're prevented from developing for six years, but then they would have a site that doesn't have any trees anyway. So e- even though we have significant tree protections and we try to preserve significant trees, there are still other ways for for sites to be made, you know, more suitable for development at the densities that we're seeing developers build at. I I, you know, I don't know. I don't know how you really protect this one small pocket of of uh, the McCormick North area.
Hey Nick.
So.
I have a couple of comments uh, and questions. Isn't this McCormick Woods project, isn't this grandfathered in? Um, so regardless if we decided as a commission tonight to make changes to the significant tree canopy program, it still wouldn't matter for this particular program. Is that correct?
For the vast majority of the area, probably ninety percent of the area, it does not matter. There's only two pockets um, of of the center that aren't entitled, and they're shown in purple. There's the purple area south of Old Clifton, which nothing has been proposed there yet, and it would be su- subject to our significant tree ordinance. And then there's the area north of Old Clifton in purple, which we do have a concept plan for what that's going to look like and a tree canopy standard that ensures that trees get planted as at a certain density for for establishing that tree canopy in the future. So yes, you the other areas of development that are already entitled, this plan has no effect on one way or another. Those are vested to other standards.
Okay, so we're we're really talking about two separate issues at this point. None of us, or it seems like the majority of us are not terribly happy with with the lack of the tree canopy that we're seeing here in this in this particular um, sub area, but there's really not a lot that we can do about this particular sub area, but we can work towards changing our programs for the future in regards to tree canopy. Is that correct?
Yes, you could absolutely change your your tree canopy standards for future development that has not yet been permitted or applied for uh, that for which the city has not received an application yet. So
Say, I think that was our goal with the significant trees. So yes, that's yeah, like I was saying before, I think much of this is horse is already out of the barn, but uh, even with that, it sounded like Nick was saying that even with the significant trees, there's ways around it with logging permits and things like that. So seems like it's almost becoming a futile effort. If nothing else in this meeting, um, errors out that we have the significant concern. I I would agree with that, but um, getting back to what we're all here for tonight is to uh, either recommend or remove the recommendation and go back to the drawing board on the sub area plan out there. And we've got a motion on the table already. And and I'd just like to see us uh, push this through because quite frankly, um, you're right. Dave, the 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 horse has left the barn. Let's get this thing going, get this thing done and passed, pushed on to the city council. And take a look at that tree canopy coverage uh, for future developments that are not permitted to this point um, for the future.
But the tree canopy, that is something that was just added in, correct? That's, it is, it reads differently. Wasn't this tree canopy just amended amended like recently?
No, we never
Greg was here?
Say that again?
Isn't, wasn't that why Greg was here to make sure that that got into it?
No, he was just adding that on on page um one forty one of your packet under section four at the top of the page. Um, it says that site tree canopy shall be measured according to table twenty point three eight two eight zero. calculation of existing and new tree canopy shall be submitted in writing by a cl- a qualified landscape designer or a licensed land surveyor. And what he wanted to add it was that an arborist could also do that work. So it would be a landscape designer, arborist, or a licensed land surveyor who would be doing the tree canopy calculations.
Okay, alright.
And I think we had arborists available in the significant tree code, didn't we not?
I thought we did.
I think so, but I would have to go back and look.
So that would actually, adding that would actually be consistent with the significant tree code.
Yeah, and I I have no objection to allowing an arborist to do that work, and I think that's a a friendly suggestion. I I think the bigger issue here is that just for this one, you know, twenty six acres of the the hundred and however, hundred and eighty or so acre sub area. We're proposing to use tree canopy on a percentage basis instead of our existing significant tree ordinance. And so currently, it says that there would be twenty five percent tree canopy, which in an in a center that has commercial development, that is a lot of trees. Um, when you consider that there's some parking, there are uh, retail and plazas and, you know, shared public spaces, that's a lot of tree canopy for that sort of development area.
Well, given that we're talking about a fairly limited area within that, and again, the horse is out of the barn, I'm not going to vote no on this, and I won't stop it from prog- progressing from my side of things. Um, but I'm surely not thrilled with it, and it's probably one of those things that it's um, I just want to kind of clear the disposition of the commission that, you know, we want to maintain natural habitat, maintain trees.
So was the um, was this meeting, was the the folks in McCormick, uh, McCormick Woods, were, did they have notice of this meeting, of this hearing tonight?
Well, the, we advertised the hearing in November, and then you made a motion to continue that hearing. So the, I don't remember whether we sent out a second notice, but it's not a second hearing, it's just a continuation of that hearing in case somebody wants to submit written comments or wants to add to their previous testimony. And so the the people who showed up last time um, had an opportunity to come back if they had additional concerns.
Okay, I guess I just wanted to know if there was ever a a notice, another notice sent that the meeting was continued, or the hearing was continued, but um, okay, so actually, nobody really showed up last time either for this.
I I think we had seven at our last meeting, and so they sat through it. Four, three or four of them testified, and then nobody came back tonight to testify other than the the developer.
Right, alright. Thanks, Nick.
And 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 the reason that we continued the hearing again was, we wanted to make sure that people had more time with it, and so we released the plan about ten days or two weeks before the hearing. We accepted testimony, and then in that hearing, we said, hey, if any, you know, if you want more time to look at this or study it, you have a second bite of the apple to come back and and bring those concerns forward, and that's that's why we extended that hearing.
Okay, so it was, I I'm lost now. Was there a second? Did someone second this?
Don't believe anyone did.
You know, I I think I can go ahead and second it. And with with the understanding of a couple of things that I'd like to clarify from Nick. Um, two things, one is that, um, Nick, you're saying that if we make an amendment, require the existing uh, tree ordinance, essentially, it really wouldn't change the outcome, A, of this development. And B, you feel that the tree canopy approach um, maintains character and environmental considerations as Um, maintains character and environmental considerations as best as possible. That what what's your take on those two statements?
So the first statement about um not being able to influence development. Again, the areas in purple have not yet been entitled or they have not yet applied for permits. So you do have the ability to influence what happens there. And the area south of Old Clifton is subject to the existing significant tree chapter of our code. The area north of Old Clifton would be su- subject to this new standard that we're creating that calls for twenty-five percent tree canopy coverage. As part of their tree canopy uh planning requirement. So you do have the ability to influence what happens north of the road. I just, my recommendation is that twenty-five percent in the center, you know, the core of your center. Is a lot of trees relative to the type of um activity that you're trying to create there. And if you want, if you want businesses at all in McCormick Woods, you need a certain number of people who can walk to those businesses. Otherwise, you you need to be planning a strip mall because everybody's going to have to drive there. And there's not going to, there wouldn't be enough parking under this current design to support a lower density proposal. So. You know, you could go a totally different direction and plan this as a strip mall instead of this kind of more walkable. Concept that we've come up with. Um, but twenty-five percent is really a lot of trees for this area um to. You know, I mean, if you look at. You know, den downtown Port Orchard or downtown Bremerton, you're talking like five percent tree canopy or ten percent tree canopy. So.
Unless you go up the boulevard.
Right, yeah, I would say you're out of downtown at that.
Uh, yeah, and there's lots of people living in McCormick, and as we pointed out earlier, they need uh infrastructure.
Yes, and I forget the second part of your question. Could you repeat it?
Well, it was that, no, I mean, I think you answered it. Um, you answered that. You know, you think you feel that the recommendation for twenty-five percent tree canopy approach maintains the character of our community.
Yeah, I think that once the trees have established themselves, it's going to be a very nice, well shaded um community. So, yes. For the first.
Yeah.
First year will be a little bare, but it's it's going to be nice.
I I'm gonna go ahead and second the motion because um I feel really strongly about. Making sure that we can um. Create housing in our community.
Um, so we have, who so who who made the motion?
Believe I did.
Okay, thank you.
And before you vote, I was gonna try to share something with you, but it's hard to answer questions and talk while I'm also looking for files. Um, I do have a concept, I have the gateway landscape plan that's been put together for. The neighborhood, I'm just trying to remember where it is saved. Um, let me see, I think I might have found it here. Yeah, here we go. Let me see if I can share my screen real quick. Okay, so this is a rendering, so McCormick Community has hired a a well-known. Um, sort of high-end landscape architect from the Seattle area, Barbara Swift. Um, her company is Swift Company, and this is the roundabout entry that they have planned. They've come up with a landscape plan for at the entrance to McCormick Village. And so this is what is proposed long term. Some of these trees are existing trees that are staying because they're around the edge of the development and they are going to try to preserve some of those trees. Um, I don't remember what order these slides are in, so um. This is, this is looking north on what used to be called Campus Parkway, we now call McCormick Village Drive. So McCormick Village Park is on the right, McCormick uh Village, the center is on the left, and so this is the entryway. And when we met with Barbara before she prepared these designs, we said, look, people are really attached to what the entrance to McCormick. Woods looks like on Old Clifton Road with that kind of, it's it's manicured, but it's still natural and has nice trees. And so this is, this is the signage and um uh. Landscape concept that she came back with, and so it's got good ground cover, it has a mix of evergreen trees. Um, it's. You know, I think it's pretty well done and it's in keeping with what the entrance to McCormick Woods looks like. It's but once you get north and you get into this area, it's not going to have quite as many. Uh, are quite as forested a feel, but it's it's going to have a nice kind of quaint uh village type feel. So they did lighting, they they've put together their lighting studies, uh their signage concepts. This is a rendering of of how this thing looks at night. And um, I mean, it's it's very well done. It's probably nicer than most things that have been done in the city of Port Orchard in our our history in terms of. You know, a a master plan development. Obviously, the old part of McCormick Woods is great, um and it's very rural and wooded feeling, but it's it's nice and she spect all. A a variety of trees, um Western red cedar, hemlock, dog fur. There is some sequoia and we were talking to her because sequoia is being used more further north. Because of of climate change related issues, they seem to be more resilient uh when we have, you know, hundred and ten degree summers. Um, service berry, bitter cherry, you know, these are, this is kind of the palette that is being specified at the entryway to to the village. I should have shown this earlier. I I hope it helps. This is the plantings in the middle of the roundabout that they just built this roundabout. They are going to landscape the center of it. And so that that's all being landscaped with several big trees and then grow uh Logan ground cover. So anyway, that was, that's something that McCormick shared with us uh a couple of months ago.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I guess I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those oppose? Did you say, uh, Trish, were you yes or no?
Uh, more yes than no. Yes, I.
I'm kind of same way, so I'll take an abst- abstain.
Okay, Stephanie, what was yours?
Oh, I'm kind of in there with Dave, riding the fence. I mean, I, but. I understand this is, you know, the like well put versus out of the barn. Um, I just. I wish the more folks from McCormick Woods should have would have come and spoke out on this. Because you know, you look at that survey results and and it isn't just about tree canopy, they were very clear, you're very concerned about habitat loss. And that's what I wish we could. Prevent a little more of. So I mean, yes, yay. Give my vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have one. Four yeses and one abstain. Is that how you took it, Nick or Josie, who has ever keeping score?
Did you vote, uh Chair Stewart?
I don't vote.
Okay, I was making sure that the the total number of votes was correct, then yes, I think it was four one. For for yes, one abstention.
Okay, you know, with that said, I'm gonna abstain also.
Okay, so we have three to three two.
Yes, I believe that is correct.
Okay.
I I if I could speak through the chair, um Chair Stewart, I just want to say. I really respect people for having this discussion tonight, and it's really important that we have these discussions. And um I I really appreciate this um chair for our community that. Dave and Stephanie brought to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, it do- doing, being in a growing community with all this growth and trying to figure out how to do it right. But still create housing for people is really, really tough. So so thanks, thanks for having the discussion, everybody.
It's a good discussion.
It was, and I appreciate all of you for your honesty. I I think that's that's really important.
Absolutely.
And uh, and sorry if I, you know, felt or was a little out there, but that's that's what I do from my job is I work with. Homeless kids and I I see it, I see where they're living and how they're living in. Seth.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Dave and and Stephanie for for sticking up on this. Um. You know, Dave, you're a hundred percent right. We all came here for the beauty of this area and. To a certain extent, I I'll speak for myself a hundred percent. Um, I'm not. All that enamored with all the growth that's going on here. I came over here for the rural uh beauty of the of the area. Um, the advantage of being on the planning commission is is we can somewhat. Help set the guidelines and controls for uh the growth that moves forward. Unfortunately, in this particular case, McCormick Woods has been planned since, what, the early eighties? And we all need to remember that 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 original part of McCormick Woods, those trees that are in there now. They were baby trees back when that development was first put together as well. That was many years ago. And I think that's what Nick's trying to uh. Push us to realize is that ten, ten fifteen years down the road where some of us may not be around here anymore. But um, we're hoping that these projects we're voting on tonight. And in the future will look similarly to the way McCormick Woods does now. Like you said, Mark, and that's part of the conversation is to make sure we do have that in the future.
Okay, so I guess that's that's the agenda. Um. Does anybody have any questions for Nick or Josie?
I wanted to make a couple of announcements and and thank you, Mark. Um, I agree that was well said and. Um, you know, I was just looking on Google Street View again at the the entrance to uh Veridian. Which is one of the newer developments in McCormick Woods and even that entrance, you know. Google Street View, they've finally driven the little Google car down there so you can see what it looks like now. And you know, those trees are are pushing twenty feet tall already at at that main entryway. So it it doesn't take long for the the trees to fill in and I I certainly understand the concern and. You know, it's, yes, I don't expect that homelessness is going to be solved by the development in McCormick Woods. Because homeless people can move into those homes, but there is clearly a housing supply issue that is driving people into homelessness. And the faster we can build houses for any portion of the population. The more we are going to prevent people from becoming homeless because their rents are increased or or other changes may occur. So um, you know, I appreciate that. Um, I did want to talk about our schedule going into next year. I do not at this time have anything for our January meeting and the January meeting is is pretty. Uh, I'm gonna be out for a number of days, so I think that the the meeting on the fourth will probably be canceled. Um, and then we will probably try to meet in February. Though um I also have a a minor medical procedure scheduled at the end of January, and I'm not sure if I'm gonna be back. For the 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 meeting would be February first, so it is possible we will not meet again until March. And um we will email you to confirm our schedule um uh before before the holidays for sure.
So I just have um just a couple of things to ask. One is the the new roundabout up here, we talked, you kind of touched on it tonight that it was a finished project. But what is the Band-Aid that's on it right now? Why are, why is the one lane blocked?
You're talking the the Tremont Roundabout?
Yes.
Uh, I believe that their Public Works is doing a traffic study there and looking at. Uh, issues of of safety and flow with regard to having two lanes that are that are going into the roundabout. They're they're thinking about making a change to that, but they're they're studying it.
Okay. And then I was wondering, would it be possible to get next year, get a list of kind of. Things that are happening in the city, like developments that are coming in or wanting to come in, just so we can kind of. Kind of see what the future is, just maybe um. And I don't know how much we can know ahead of time or not, but like you you talk about those building. You know, coming in, but it'd be nice to be able to see that and where and where, which part of the city that it's gonna be in. And if you can't do that, that's fine too. It's it was just a.
We can definitely do that and um, why don't we plan on, uh Josie, if you will please put. Start our next meeting agenda, let's plan on it being in February, and if for some reason it doesn't happen in February, it'll still be saved on our draft agenda. Um, I will have Josie and Jim update our current project list and I'll try to. Um, put together a slideshow just showing you what what different projects are coming and where those projects are located. And it's it's a lot. I mean, it's it's probably a two-hour meeting to go through everything that we have before us, so. Um, and and seeing as how I don't have anything that I'm expecting to bring to you. Um, before February, we may just have a meeting to talk about what's going on in Port Orchard before we kick off our work program for next year with. Uh, I'm I'm actually hoping that we don't have any annual comprehensive plan amendments next year. I'd like to finish the parks plan. Um, I know there's, there there may be a minor housekeeping ordinance. And then we're really gonna be diving into the periodic update of the city's comprehensive plan, which is due in twenty twenty-four. So we are. Uh, we've hired our transportation consultant who's gonna help with that work. Um, but really, we're not gonna get started on the periodic update until next summer at the earliest. So I'm I'm hopeful that nobody files any amendments for the the annual cycle this year. And we can focus kind of on our bigger long-term projects uh in twenty twenty-two.
And then Nick, I also um made that current projects map for you for a presentation. And have the base file that would be really easy to update that as new projects come in and as they're completed to share as a visual with all of you.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we should update that. And then what I'd like to do is, I'd like to put together just a slideshow and if we can go from that projects map. And just pull up some imagery of each of the projects so that the planning commissioners um can kind of see how things are being laid out. And what what is actually happening on each of these sites, that would be good.
Yeah.
I wish we could do a driving tour like we did that one time four or five years ago, maybe six years ago.
That was a long time ago.
Could do a driving tour, it's just everybody has to take their own car.
Communicate on walkie-talkies.
There we go.
We could do Zoom from the car.
And then I was wondering if um, and maybe Mark, you could be, you know, you could put a bug in someone's ear. Um, we used to sometimes meet, have joint meetings with the council, council. And we haven't done that for a while either, and I was wondering if maybe sometime next year we could schedule something.
We nearly scheduled one of those for the Parks Plan, but then our consultant didn't get the plan to us in time. We were trying to have him present to to both the city council and the planning commission together, so it is possible that that will occur. Um, in the near future, and I'll I'll put a bug in the mayor's ear that um. You know, I I think the council is probably due for a a retreat. Um, now especially that Mark is coming on to the the city council, usually in January or February, they will have a. A facilitated discussion about priorities and. You know, the the planning commission, i- its role is really to provide advice to the city council more so than to set. Set policy, but I think there might be a role for you to play either as in kind of observing and hearing from the city council. What their objectives are, or at least having some of that information summarized. So um, I will mention that to the mayor, depending on what our plans for uh twenty twenty-two council retreat look like. And maybe um, maybe we can get you involved in that at least as observers. So that you kind of hear it from the the horse's mouth on on what we're trying to, what direction we're heading.
Yeah, and then um, tonight with our schooling of the Roberts rules. That there was about when when the mayor first came on, he brought uh in. And I think Anne McFarlane or something from Jurassic Par- Parliament, and maybe we could do something like that again, even if it's on Zoom.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that um, we're gonna have a couple of new planning commissioners. And so depending on who ends up being on the planning commission and what their experience is, I think that is probably appropriate. And um. I will, I will raise that as well.
Okay, are we losing somebody else?
Um. Sure. I'm not sure who's up for renewal this year, but I know that Mark's leaving.
It's me. I was, I wasn't sure if you guys already knew, but my term is up this month. And uh. I chose not to renew at this time. Um, I just. I'm doing a new job, I'm going to school so I can keep said job and it's just, it's a lot. And so I did tell Rob, I talked to him last week um that it's not completely goodbye, it's just goodbye for now. Um, once I think I have my teaching certification under my belt, then I would be interested in coming back. Because you guys are definitely my. teaching certification under my belt, then I would be interested in coming back because you guys are definitely my peeps, and I've really enjoyed my last what is it, eight years on the planning commission. Um, and so hopefully, when I come back, we actually can be in person too.
Well, we're gonna miss you, but at least I get to work with you still.
Yes, and I will stop by and see you soon.
Perfect.
Thanks, Trish.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry to see you go.
I know, I'll miss you guys.
You can still come back.
Yes, exactly. So I'll just be, I won't be a panelist. I'll have to raise my hand if I want to talk.
Alright. But that's all I have. Does anybody else, do you guys have anything you want to say or ask or no, other than thank you and goodbye to, I guess, both Mark and Trish, to your last evening, last meeting with us.
Weird.
It's been a pleasure.
It is, it is a little bit strange. Um, I've enjoyed working with all you guys. I've learned a lot. And I'm gonna continue to try to learn a lot, and and Ned, I think that's a good idea. One of the things that I'd like to do is is to learn more about our position and how we can help and and facilitate with the council um from the planning commission. Um, so I'm I'm all over that, trying to get uh our mayor to do some dual meetings. I think that's a great idea.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright, Mark, thanks for your service.
Yes. I'm gonna miss both of you guys. I mean, it, we're kind of like a little family here, and
Yes, I agree.
A pleasure.
Yeah.
With all of you.
Anyway, hey, you guys, all have a nice holiday. Um and Nick, good luck on your surgery if we don't see you before then, but
Yeah.
And thank you, Josie, for always hanging out and for uh sending me my making sure I get my meeting on my other email, otherwise I'd never find it.
Yes, thank you, Josie.
Nice, nice job corralling Josie. Well done.
Yes, you're hurting cats.
Thank you all. Good night.
Alright, thanks, Nick.
Thanks, everybody.